Special Town Meeting, Town of Sturbridge, formerly known as the Northfield. And a few things before we start. First, if you're all standing, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. As in our practice, that is not appropriate. Moment of meditation of silence below. Prayers that we've been doing for the last few years. More honor and respect for the deaths through COVID pandemic that's today on check. CPC COVID data tracker. They save one million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six virulence as to the COVID infection. Second, one of our purposes has been the last few years to memorialize who will have all of the silence. And prayers and thoughts, if prayers and thoughts were working, they would be doing too good a job for the gun deaths we've had in this country by the students, teachers, elderly citizens who have been killed by gun violence. And last, is a list of local citizens that, in this moderator's knowledge, have passed away and had a substantial impact or contribution to the community. I apologize if I've left out anyone. I do the best I can to come up with this list, but it's never, ever perfect. One is John Cannaman, who was a former Tanjasko principal and was a trustee at Old Sturbridge Village. Next is Patricia Chawwet Wondalowski, who was a volunteer here in Cedar Lake Association and part of the Quanats Club in Cedar Lake. Next was Amy Paloka, who was involved with the Panas Challenge. Next was Patricia Jepris, who was a member of the CPA and was chairperson of the CPA and was an election worker for many years. And last is Eugene Dave Badioli, who was a state police officer and by experience practicing law or the finest police officers I ever met in my life. And he passed away as well fairly recently. So we have a moment for all these purposes. Thank you. You can be seated now. As you may remember, at our last annual town meeting, we asked a amendment for a town charter. The amendments have to be approved by a representative vote which is going to occur by secret. And they also have to be approved by the Attorney General. Having said all that, one of the major changes that we put in was to put in the electronic voting for vote-by-clickers. We talked about that before. So as of right now, it's not just formally approved. So I still need a motion to allow the use of electronic clickers. So we'll wait a second. Hearing none? Any discussion? All in favor of using electronic clickers? Right now, you start putting hands up. Okay, any votes? Pass is over, one. Now, from here on in, we can use the clickers. How do you use them? Well, if everybody remembers, it's got three buttons on it. The first button is always a yes button. See, there's green light matches the three other clicker. The no is the red button. And the three is the, I guess the, I don't know.
Abstain.
Abstain button. You can hit that if you want, but I don't. No count of abstains. Okay, you can't change this. What happens is we'll say we're going to vote on this article. And we'll say we're going to give you a certain amount of time. A lot of time to give and then. Twenty seconds, thank you. So if you have time, if you change your mind, you think about it, oh, I don't want to vote forward, I want to vote against it. You can change it, as long as you have a disclaimer. Period. So you can flip-flop back and forth if you like and just see how it turns out. Do whatever makes you so feel good that you better vote using these clickers. Okay, that's it. At the end of the vote, what will happen is we get the TV here, the screen. You get to see how it turns out. You can actually see the vote. I'm told the last count I had was about sixty people here. So we can not use that as a, as a test. We've done some test votes in the past. It'll always work. These papers have been checked today. They're all functioning to our knowledge. So we're going to go ahead and use it today. Okay, let's see. If it comes, worst comes to worst. Electricity goes out or something happens, we can do alternative forms of voting. Again, holding your hands up is as simple. If worst comes to worst to worst, we can appoint counters. Go out and count with this crowd. We could probably handle without having actual counters. Okay, parliamentary procedure. Speakers, this hasn't changed. If you're recognized by the moderator, you're going to address yourself to the moderator. And hopefully, if we have a discussion going on, and I don't want to use the word debate, about an article, we'd like to see people who are for it, people who are against it all today. Simple reason, just makes it more interesting discussion. Rather than having ten people who are all for it just going on one after the other, just repeating why you're all for it. Having somebody say the opposite point of view makes it a little more interesting to hear. Parliamentary procedure itself. Several years ago, and it has been improved, the Town Meeting Time, which is now its third edition. And for what it's worth, it's about to come out its fourth edition very shortly. That's prepared by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. And that is our official bible, if you will, of parliamentary procedure. Second source we use is moderators' own common sense and back there, I guess. And if both those fail, we can fall back on Robert's Rules of Order. That really applies to small committee groups rather than in town meetings setting like this. So it doesn't have to have a lot of application. Okay, substitute motions. If it should come to pass, and I hold, I hold the will, that if somebody doesn't like the recommendation of the Finance Committee, they want to instead propose their own motion. They want to do something different than what the Finance Committee recommends. What you do is you prepare a substitute motion. Substitute motion says what you would like. Okay, now, the procedure is you prepare. You'd like to see it done in writing because it makes it a lot easier for me and Lynn Gerard, the town clerk, if we have it in writing. Because if somebody changes something, it's hard to figure it out. You're just saying it by your own opinion. Having it in writing, we know exactly what you're trying to do. Now, you prepare, submit it to the man or submit it to me. When the article comes up, we'd appreciate it, okay? I don't think we have one we think they can then yawn that I don't vote any. We certainly will give you a chance if you want to present. That's going on. Once it's presented, I'm certain it's presented. The motion's made. I assume somebody will second it. Then we do a discussion. Most times, a substitute motion, I say most times, is dispositive of the whole thing. Sometimes you can pass a substitute motion. I'm sorry, fail a substitute motion, not pass. Fail it. It doesn't really dispose of the issue in any other. So you got to go back to the main motion and then go really deal with it. Kind of hard to describe. Like you saw it when it happened, you would know. Okay, let's see. The next thing is, as we've done before, we try to limit the amount of time that people speak. Why do we do that? Not to cut off everyone's right to debate, but things they want to know. People already looking at their watches here. I'm talking too long as this. But part of it is, is that you can say pretty much what you want. Edward Everett, who was the governor of Massachusetts way back in the day, gave a speech beforehand, before Abraham Lincoln at Gettysburg, a year after. He spoke for over two hours. Can anybody tell me one thing he said in that speech? Abraham Lincoln spoke for two minutes. A lot of you should remember Baker's last name today. So it's not so much how long you speak, it's pretty much what you say. Okay, a couple of things. Fire department wants me to make sure that you know where the fire exits are. I want people to look around. If we have an emergency, the exits are marked and you can escape out. And no standing along unless you're working. One of the constables are here to help us. If you're not a constable, please have a seat. Let's see where we are. I can't put too many pages. Okay, I think, on the same topic, I just want to make the announcement tonight. And that is, I have had the privilege of being the moderator here in Sturbridge for 23 years. I was elected in April. Yeah, 23 years, imagine that. In April 2001. I've been the moderator ever since. Have enjoyed it tremendously and had a lot of satisfaction. Time goes on, it's time to retire from this job. Not retired from practicing law, I'm just retiring from this job. So at the end of my term, hopefully, new voters can select another moderator and take my place. And I want to thank, first of all, first and foremost, my wife Susan, who's here tonight, for putting up with me all these years doing this. I want to thank the Finance Committee, Kevin Smith, and the rest of the committee while we've helped you bit over the years. I want to also thank Lynn Gerard, our town clerk, and her predecessor, Maureen Morawski. They were tremendous help to me. The town administrators, the various town boards, who are selectmen I've worked with. And I have enjoyed it a lot and felt it one of the greatest honors of my career was holding this job for as long as I have. But that's that. Thank you. And I want to thank you for the kindness that you've shown me. And as you may remember, I've always, always, always quoted the French philosopher, not Corte, of these meetings. This is what I'm talking about. And it is not genius nor glory nor love that reflects the greatness of the human soul. It is kindness. And you people demonstrated to me all these years that I thank you for it. Having said that, we are now ready to do a town meeting. First article that we have tonight is Article 48. Now, most articles we vote on tonight will be voted by majority voting. This is one of the exceptions. The exception is, is that if the town doesn't pay its bills within the year they're supposed to be paid and they're overdue, you can go back and you could approve a late, late decision. But I can, before I get into the article, I'm going to do a couple of things. Okay, the warrant itself. I started to jump into this warrant. I've had the opportunity to look at it and I've satisfied the way it's prepared, the way it's been executed, the way it was published by the town, I'm a constable. And I would accept a motion to accept a warrant. It's the first thing we have to do. So we have a second. No seconds? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Quick, quick, quick. Twenty seconds. I think we're ready. Done. Okay, so we get the vote. Okay, okay. We're doing it by percentages, not actual votes, I guess. Okay? Second thing is that some towns go to their town meeting and they read the whole warrant. Just down this term. They read every single article. They read every single motion. Our practice in Sturbridge has been to waive that and to allow the main motions being made. You all have copies of the warrant in front of you. And of course, if we have a substitute motion, we certainly discuss that. But can we get a motion to waive the necessity of reading the warrant, individual articles, and the Finance Committee, Finance Committee main? Some will use second. Second, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, let's see what we got here. Chairman, can you help us? Hold on. Doesn't mean we all voted. Forty-three percent is positive. I see zero percent for the negatives. Doesn't matter, you know? Why does that? Sorry, I think there's somebody who did all. Okay, what are these simple things? Can we go back and do that vote again? Hold on. Yes, ma'am? Well, there's two ways. Three things. If you voted yes, you would have it. If you didn't, if nobody voted no, it would show zero votes. And if it abstained, it would show, it would show one way or the other. Well, I don't think that's likely votes. No, it doesn't have to be 100%.
You don't vote?
You don't vote. You have 66 voters. And for some reason, 10 people don't vote at all. You're only going to have 56. So you won't have 100%. Okay, we're going to go to numbers? Okay, we're going to go to numbers this time? Okay, let's go back to accepting the warrant. This is probably, this is exactly where we should have had a test vote. Right, of course. Okay, let's try this again. We have a motion made to accept the warrant. There's been a second. And all those in favor voting the warrant to be accepted signify by voting yes, starting now. Twenty seconds. Now. Close. See, I woke everybody up. They all voted this time. Okay, now let's go back to where we were. We had a motion on the floor to waive the reading of the articles, waive the reading of the warrant, and waive and allow the Finance Committee's recommendation to go in without having necessarily been read. Okay, it's all in the warrant. You can read it yourself. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? Again, let's try it again. All in favor signify by voting yes or no. Twenty seconds.
Three seconds.
Time. Okay, let's see how this works. Back of 41% and 3%. Okay, let's try this one more time. Okay, this is the article to waive the reading of the warrant, waive the reading of the individual articles, and the Finance Committee's main recommendations. When I say start, we can start our voting then. It'll be 20 seconds from when I start. Okay, so let's start voting now. Stop. Okay, let's see how, let's see how this works out. Okay. Part of the most exciting part of the night, yes. Okay, now we can get into the articles. First article, which we discussed, is a nonpayment of last year's bill. That takes a nine-tenths vote. Nine-tenths vote. So we can do it by either by percentages or we can do it by vote count. I think we could figure that math out if we had to. Okay, again, motion to repay or pay last year's bills. What was the amount of that? We have that in mind?
$202.95.
That's a big one, yeah. $1,202. $1,202. $1,202.95 for recyclables hauling. Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing none? Let's try this again. Now, please wait. I'm going to tell you, start now. We're going to count 20 seconds from there, okay? Okay, very good. Let's do it. Ready? Okay, let's vote, starting now. Stop. 100%, that's more than 90%. Very good. Article two. Article two, community preservation, ADA accessibility, and 60 Cedar Street. That requires a majority vote. And the vote of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. And that article, they requested 546,061 dollars to come from community preservation. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? Let's try this again. Anybody see it?
Hi, my name's Dory Groul, 9 Cedar Pond Drive. I'm new to the area, so I would just like to know if somebody could explain this whole project and to me and what effects it'll have on our lake or anything? I don't know if that's possible.
Fair enough. Is the CPC chairman here?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, if I could, that would be it.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. This project is an ADA compliance project. It doesn't expand the amount of activities. It allows wheelchair access to the beach area. It incorporates a new playground equipment that children who are handicapped could use. It puts new footings and floorings underneath that. Annie from Recreation is here as well. I believe it makes the bathrooms.
It's bathrooms are the only spot that does not need to work.
They don't need, so they were accessible.
Yeah.
But it allows.
Sorry, please. But they're speaking. You want to speak?
I'm sorry, I asked. That might have. So it doesn't expand use, this project. This is literally because a child with needs or an adult with needs even cannot access the beach from the lot. They can't access. And the playground equipment is not sufficient for a child with needs.
Thank you. Any other comments on this article? Want to see somebody? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Pat Gesneck from 12 Cedar Lake Drive. And I just had a question as to what kind of surfaces is this going to have? Are they going to get?
You have to speak up. You have to get closer to the mic.
Okay. As far as the surfaces goes, to be ADA compliant, are they going to get rid of all that blue rubber substance that's hidden presently on the ground? It's everywhere, all over the roads and so forth?
Yes, it is. That's a major part.
Could you please identify yourself?
Annie Rossioli, Recreation Director. So a major part of this project is removing those rubber chips that are not ADA compliant. It'll switch over to the port-in-place flooring that's actually featured at the Burgess Playgrounds here. And that is the previous material. So we will not have the issues of the rubber chips continuously going down into the lake anymore.
Okay, and how are those going to be disposed of?
Yeah, it would go, well, I don't want to speak incorrectly on specifics, but it would be a part of what's contracted out.
Okay. Thank you. Any one else have any comments on this article? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Sandy Gibson, Quigley, 66 Cedar Road. I'm just clarifying. I believe the previous question wanted to know how this would impact the taxes. So I think somebody should explain what CPC does, please.
So CPC is, if you look at your tax bill and you see a CPC charge, that money has already been collected from you and is collected from you every year. The funding for this comes from CPC funding. There has been money set aside for recreation. The Recreation Director, the, excuse me, Recreation Committee Chair is here as well. And they have worked with CPC to ensure that there has been money set aside for recreation projects. This is not a new bill or an added bill. This just comes out of your annual CPC allotment. And then we go in front of CPC with projects and ask for their consideration.
Yeah, CPC stands for Committee Preservation Committee. And under the statute of the way we've adopted it, a certain percentage can be used for all restoration of old buildings and old things in general. Second is recreation, and the third is for housing. And there are statutory provisions as to how much for each. But this is within their realm of expertise and their realm of authority at this point that could be used if voters decide to vote. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am? Down the microphone. It's my last meeting. I can be mean to everybody.
Carrie Cole, 100 Cricket Drive.
Please come closer to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie Cole, 100 Cricket Drive. I just have a question for Annie. Are you updating and adding gates for the exterior? Think of this parent of two toddlers. It's a very dangerous part to take our children to because it exits right into the lake.
Ms. Rossioli, can you answer?
Yes, we are. One gate on each side, so two gates total. And I couldn't agree with you more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Well, Katie Phillips, One Committee in Paradise Lane. I'm the Recreation Chair and also Recreation Liaison with CPC. So I just wanted to address the questions actually on the record. So in terms of the CPC, we decided to go with the CPC so it wouldn't have any impact on the tax pay as money's already been collected. So that was a major reason for going through the CPC. We do have enough funds that we'll be able to cover this. And we have balance that will be able to cover categories moving forward. So it shouldn't have too much financial impact. In terms of rubber pallets, that is a major concern while we're doing this project. It'd be easy to get rid of all that wash off into the lake. So by putting that rubber surface, similar to what Burgess has, it will be a stable surface. Another problem we find is children are difficult to fall in the rubber pallet a little bit more. So it'll be a safer environment and be more inclusive for all of the residents who are here. Also, in the summer, we have over 270 children that participate in the summer rep program. So it'll be great to make that inclusive program for all children to be a part of that. During the day also, when you play it on your purchase. During the day also, when played on here at Burgess is not accessible, that will be the area where children can go. So your younger children who are not at school age, or your homeschool children, will be able to access that area. This is a great project, I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jeff Arness, 68 Physical Road. This is a question maybe for Katie, who just sat down, but I'd be interested to know roughly, top level, top line, what funds this leaves in the CPC, in the CPC fund after we spend it, and if there are any, you know, kind of big projects planned in the next year or two for that.
Kevin, you want to...
I have the numbers.
You have the numbers, why don't you?
So our starting balance and the undecimated fund balance is $1,364,373. If we expend the $546,061, we're left with $818,312 in undecimated fund balance.
Thank you.
Anything to any...
I don't have any. It's completely under the purview of this CPA committee, CPC committee, so I might just track you.
Anybody from CPC that can address, I guess whether he's asking future actions or future projects?
What's lined up to spend that?
Exactly, yeah. Anybody from CPC feel comfortable? Okay? Recreation standing up, give me my breath of money.
Yeah, I'm also the Vice Chair of the CPC Committee and the Recreation Liaison. So... So with the CPC funds, what we do is typically each year we'll get projects from various departments across the town. So they will come to us with a project that they wanna do. We have a survey coming up pretty soon, highlighting all the projects we've done in the past. You know, for some of the things you may not know, we were a part of in terms of funding. So just to make the public aware of what the funds are being used for. But we feel we do have sufficient funds for any future projects. This is what we're unanimously in favor of at the CPC committee, so they have our support for sure, and we do have enough funds for future projects moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Seth Manster, 148 Cedar Street. Just like to make a few statements in favor of the voting for this. I also have two children, and when I only had one, it was one-on-one defense. With two children by myself, having open gates on opposite diagonal corners of the playground, it gets a little sketchy. I chase after my older daughter first, and then the younger daughter second, before she gets to the lake. So having gates is amazing that on the playground here at Burgess, which has lovely, you know, closure gates, if you look on the play structure here, it actually says it's ages, I wanna say five to seven. And interestingly, for the Cedar Pond Playground, it actually says ages, I wanna say three to five. So it's interesting that there's labels on the Cedar Rec Area Playground saying it's suitable for a younger category of kids, yet it's not as safe. The two kinds of sides of the playground over at Cedar Pond, there is the younger section that's closer to the road, and if anybody walks over there, they'll see that... I'm six one, and I can slide on the slide just fine. My one-year-old, she's fallen off the bottom of the slide a few times, and it's a little scary. So I'm glad for this project. And also from an environmental perspective, having all that rubber, I see it migrating across the grass, into the sand, and into the water. So from an environmental perspective, I'm really excited to see that aspect solidified in the rubberized surface that is both above here and on the other side of Burgess. So that's the category of children. The other category I'd like to speak on behalf of is wounded warriors. So I served in Iraq from 2008, 2009, and there are a number of my men and women, brothers, sisters in arms, that did not come back with all four limbs, like I was very honored to. So making sure that we make our spaces accessible. I just heard on the radio, I forget the exact age and date, but we just came across an anniversary of the, I wanna say the ADA, Americans for Disability Act. And I'm on Ward 84, and I remember as a very young kid, there was a number of places in my town of Western Mass that did not have curb cuts. They were still phasing it in, and phasing them in with curb cuts to allow wheelchair access and people with disabilities. And I view this as a keystone, or a key project, to continue that accessibility and inclusion. We used to just say, hey, you can't even get, you can't go to school, just stay home. Your legs don't work. We now view people as old humans, and I view this project as one of those, you know, very important projects to allow inclusion. Elderly veterans. I'm the Finance Officer for the American Legion here in town, and there are a number of people that have mobility challenges, as older veterans, still shrapnel in their legs from Vietnam, Korea, and other conflicts. And I would love to know that they feel comfortable, safe, and confident to be able to go there with their grandkids, and be on that playground, and access the beach. And then I've also met with, talked with a number of other families that live in adjacent towns that don't have nice facilities like we do. And they stop at Sturridge Coffee, they stop for a Bealbert Sturridge Cedar Street Grill. So that is a nice draw to our town that's bringing in tax revenue for families that feel safe. And because that playground, I think it was mentioned, I just wanna reiterate, these two playgrounds here at Burgess are not available during school hours. That, that we're in a tough conversation about Cedar Pond, that's available and open while schools and sessions. That's key for homeschool families, not only from our town, but also from adjacent. So people homeschool their kids over in Ward, fill the blank, I was just talking to someone over there, and they love our town. They love coming to our town, giving them another reason to come to our town. So my young kids, wounded warriors, elderly veterans, and just being a great attraction in the southwest, central regions. Thank you, everybody, for your time. I'm voting yes, just to be clear, I said a lot of words.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Okay, anyone else wanna be heard? Okay, I think we're all set for a vote. Again, this is a majority vote. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the articles written, to appropriate the, back to the other page, oops, I asked it, of course. All in favor signify by clicking yes on their vote, starting now. I guess my "now" is being nonsense. Okay, that's it. 83%, so that passes by far more than majority. Next article is, that's 51. That's the 52. That's the Sewer Reserve Fund Transfer. That's the transfer... Yeah. Shouldn't this be there? Get me trouble. Don't listen to voices in your ear, it doesn't, never works that. Okay. Article 50 is a Free Cash Transfer for Ineligible Grant Expenditure. Now, we normally have, I'll say, three ways of raising money. Number one way is by taxation. Number two is by using community preservation monies, which I just saw an example. And the third is that from time to time, we've appropriated, I'll say, too much money, and I don't mean those done intentionally, but for whatever reason, and there's a gazillion reasons, the money wasn't expended, that was appropriated. That gets carried over, is carried over as free cash. So it's not a new tax, it's money that's already been appropriated from taxes, or grants, or whatever source it was in the past, but it's sitting there. So in this article, they're asking to transfer some of that free cash, just where it is, to pay a, something that, expenses that were ineligible for reimbursement for grant. So it gets a little bit confusing as we're talking about grants and free cash in the same article, but the bottom line, it comes from our free cash to make up this money. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Again, this is a majority vote article. Let's try this again, and I guess we're gonna, I might have to look at this clock to make sure I'm timing. Okay, can we start it now? Time's up. That passed by 98%. Okay, Article 51. Article 51, Another Free Cash Transfer. Transfer from Free Cash $50,000 to the, this is to the Sewer Reserve Funds. Okay, $50,000 to the Reserve Fund, not Sewer, the General Reserve Fund, for covering unexpected expenses incurred through the fiscal year. Can I ask the Town Administrator, give us a highlight of what are these unexpected expenses? Okay, can I go into...
Sure. So we, back in October, we had three requests from different town departments. One for $43,124 for the DPW diesel tank, the piers that needed to be done there, and some pumping that needed to be taken out due to infiltration. We had higher renewal costs for our insurance, so the insurance blanket needed to be increased by $41,000. And then if you haven't noticed, the elections this year aren't going to be held in the town hall, but they're gonna be held at the host hotel. So there were additional costs related to moving from the town hall to the host hotel for $1,575. And so our initial appropriation was $184,000. After all, done, we're at $98,301. We're not really halfway through the year yet, so we're looking to kind of increase the balance again in case some other unexpected things come along, especially here in the winter months. And so this would bring us back to $148,301.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments on this? Hearing none, this is a majority vote article. Again, when we tell you to start, start, and we're gonna start the vote right now. We're done. That passes by 94%. Okay. More than majority. Article 52, Sewer Reserve Fund Transfers. And this is to appropriate some of $152,000 to the sewer maintenance account, and the source of this is, Kevin, can you help me on this? Where's the source of this money? Sorry, what's the source of this money?
The sewer fund balance, it's, you know, the sewer water or special reserve fund, special collective fund, and this is within that special fund, it's its own reserve fund.
Try to find sewer fund balance, okay. That's within the sewer department?
Yeah, it's within the sewer...
Budget.
Yeah, sewer reserve department.
Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, again, we're gonna vote, we're gonna give the commencement order, and we're gonna start voting now. Five seconds. And we're done here. 93.85%. So that passes by majority. Next article, Article 53. Again, another transfer from the sewer fund balance to the sewer reserve fund for unexpected costs incurred. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, majority vote, and we'll tell you when to start, and you can start voting now. We're done. 92.65%. Article 54 is the Water Reserve Fund Balance Transfer comparable to the sewer fund. This also has a reserve fund, and this is a transfer within that. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Do we have any discussion on this? Hearing none, we can start voting now. We're finished. 93.85%. So that passes by more than majority. Last article for the night is Article 55, River Road Easements. Now, a couple points. The article that's written talks about voting to authorize the Conservation Commission to acquire by gift, so on and so on, certain easement rights on properties on River Road. It's my understanding, however, that the Town Administrator has submitted a substitute motion, and the substitute motion is to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift. I don't think this is the right language here. Does that fit?
That is the right language.
Okay. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, and upon such terms and conditions as the Board may deem appropriate, real property interest in the lands known as One River Road, assesses a partial number, certain number, and Nine River Road, assesses a partial number, certain number, for the purpose of locating there on a recreational trail for non-motorized use, and establishing parking incidental there too, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter all agreements and take all actions necessary, convenient, or appropriate to carry out such acquisition, or take any other action relative there too. So this talks in language of our article, not a vote, but I guess we can say for out of vote, not a vote.
So, Mr. Moderator, I think as we talked about, I had it, we're said article, but that would actually be in the form of a motion now. But if I could explain the confusion, the need for the change?
Let's see if we get a second on this first, okay? Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Now, if you wanted to discuss this.
So when we had that article drafted, I had some language to Mr. Eichmann, who I think I can express to him, or through my emails, he had thought it was a conservation article. When he sent it back to me with conservation language, I presumed there was some legal reason conservation was in there. So it was a total miscommunication on my part. This is not a conservation project, this is a trails project. These two properties have been given to the town by private owners who are willing to give us, I should say easements, not properties, they're giving us easements. The only reason this actually comes in front of town meeting versus simply the Board, because the Board has the authority to accept passive recreational land, a portion of this is active. I said a part of portion, we talked about, is active. And because a portion of one of these has an active component, as opposed to a passive component only, like if it was just gonna sit there and be wooded, but because people like park, town meeting has the right to have it in front of them. So basically, what we'd be voting on tonight is to accept private donation of easements, so that we can better access some of our trails. so that we can better access some of our trails. We have Mr. Goodman and Mr. Chamberlain here from Trails if there are specific questions on the project, but again, the reason this is in front of you is because there is some component of it that is not passive, so you have to authorize the Board to accept it as a gift. There's no money to borrow, I think it's a dollar to register the deed, which we have to, but I apologize for the confusion on the language with conservation, that was my bad, I think I misled our attorney, which we never tried to lead your attorney.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this? Basically, it's to give the rights away, the easements if you will, to the Board of Selectmen. The original article called for it can be given to the Conservation Commission, you can be given into a, I'll say, more broadly, our Board than the Board of Selectmen, and you can get into the issue of passive versus active and all that stuff if you want, but that's kind of where it's coming from. That's why I feel this is within the scope of the article and should be acted upon in that form, whichever way you view it once further. Okay? This is a, this is a majority vote article. Does anyone have any comments that we haven't already raised? Seeing none? Let's try voting. Yeah, I am, I'm sorry, didn't see them.
Hi, MC Porter, 193 Fiscal. I just want to make sure I understand...
Please speak into the microphone.
I want to make sure I understand, what are we voting on now? The article as written or your amended?
The amendment. Is that amended?
So you're taking out the acquire or buy or whatever and just having the gift? Yes. Okay.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Again, we're going to use our clickers, and we're going to start voting now. We're done. That being the completion of the warrant tonight, I think I'd be willing to accept a motion to dismiss the meeting or adjourn the signing.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor? Vote by saying yes, I guess. Thank you very much. Lynn, thank you very much, Mr. Constable. Please drop off your clickers on the way out. Please do.